Good evening. I'll call to order the May 10th Arvada City Council Workshop. And calling Kristen Rush for roll call.
Mayor Williams.
I'm sorry Nancy, I thought you were over there. Here.
Mayor Proton Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Devon, we've got two workshops tonight, first on water infrastructure.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have Director of Utilities Sharon Israel and City Engineer Jaclyn Rhodes, who will be making presentations tonight. They'll both be remote, and I believe we're going to start with Sharon, although I see Jaclyn's...Jaclyn, are we starting with you or Sharon? I think we're starting with Sharon. Okay, so Sharon Israel, Director of Utilities, will start the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're so excited to be here tonight, Jaclyn and I, to give you an update on what we've been up to since our last presentation to you in December.
Could we get volume down just a little bit for, I think it's all of us, so...
My volume?
I think all of us are a little loud tonight. I'm always loud, but I'm sounding even more loud than usual.
I can take direction.
That's good, because I can't.
Okay, if I need to adjust my own tone of voice, please let me know.
You're good. You're good now.
I wanted to also mention, Jaclyn and I, up until just this morning, had the intention to attend this meeting in person and get to see you all. It's been a long time. And so I'll share that I've got one of my kiddos came down with COVID symptoms just today. And so out of an abundance of caution and following protocols, I'm staying put until his test result comes back, hopefully tomorrow. So to kick things off, I wanted to ask if each of you has a copy of a handout in front of you? Did those get distributed? Yes, okay, I see them waving. That's an update to the handout you may recall we gave you in December. I've been calling it our one-pager. There's a lot in there. That's for reference as we go through, especially Jaclyn's presentation on where we are with our CIP planning. Go to the next slide, please. And I think it's Kevin. I want to thank Kevin for this. So we're going to start with a little bit of a review from December around us and some of the philosophical discussions, how we're approaching our water infrastructure needs. Then Jaclyn's gonna take over and give you a capital planning update. Then I'm gonna hop back and talk to you about some more short-term challenges we have. We've got some capacity challenges that we want to talk through with you in this workshop setting. And then the last two portions of our presentation will review a financial needs analysis we've conducted since the last time we spoke to you in a workshop in December, and also propose a few recommendations for the upcoming budget cycles and ask for council feedback on that direction we're suggesting. Next slide. Next slide. Okay, so why water matters, I want to just remind everyone who may be listening, we're talking about not just the tap water, the drinking water that we enjoy when we turn on the faucet in our kitchen. We're also talking about the infrastructure that supplies water for firefighting in partnership with our God of Fire, the whole system behind that. It also is water for our landscape, our beautiful community, including our irrigation systems, our gardens. I've got a...that's a picture of a few flowers in my garden. I've got some good hardy drought-resistant plants in there. This is why water matters. And what Jaclyn and I are presenting tonight are an update and recommendations on all the infrastructure that allows us to have these kind of services in our community and meet the needs of our residents and businesses and, of course, our fire protection partners. Next slide. So that last year, as we were preparing to give you an update on our master planning work, we had a number of internal workshops. And you guys have seen word clouds before. I love this word cloud. It came from our internal team and giving us some ideas and direction on philosophy and on how we want to move forward with the planning that we're doing. And you can see right there, "safe and reliable," right at the top. Those are the words that we're using to guide us. You're gonna hear Jaclyn talk a little bit about some future work we're embarking on. That really helps us quantify that, put some numbers to it, assess risk. But "safe and reliable," I think you may agree, those are two things we all want when we're talking about our water supply and our infrastructure. Next slide. So this is another slide we showed you back in December. There are a couple of themes that came out of the findings of our last master planning work. We've got an aging infrastructure challenge, not unlike many communities around the country. And we've got also some limitations to our capacity that impact our ability to serve plan development. And so when we were looking at our master plan outcomes last December with you, we talked about both of those categories. And you may recall that from a philosophical perspective, the infrastructure, the aging infrastructure, we strive to pay for those types of projects from existing rates and service fees. That's just, you know, the day-in-and-day-out replacement of things at the end of their use of life. On the capacity side, our philosophy is to fund those projects through TAP fees and developer contributions. So we have that idea that growth pays for itself. So throughout today's presentation, you're gonna hear us refer to these categories, the reinvestment of aging infrastructure, and then also the capacity piece, because they really do have different types of pressures that they put on the system. And we've got different sources of revenue that fund those different kinds of projects. Next slide. So just a reminder, you know, this is a journey that we have been on as a city for decades. Back, if you want to look at 20 years ago, we had certain priorities about upgrading our water treatment facility to meet regulatory requirements that were changing. We anticipated a lot of development, plan development on the west side of town, and started to add to our distribution system out there. If you look about 10 years ago, you know, you guys have heard, our big priority is getting water supply for build-out secured. We are in an enviable position across the Front Range. You know, I'm not sure how many communities can say that they are in as good a position as Arvada. That has been our focus, is funding the gross reservoir expansion and looking at some of these other facilities we need to put in place in order to serve the future. So right now, here in the 2020s, our big emphasis is continuing that necessary expansion, but also a lot of reinvestment. You're gonna hear Jaclyn talk about this in more detail. But just to give you an idea, when we talk about reinvestment, I was out at one of our treatment plants this week, the Arvada plant, which we start up seasonally, like it was started up actually this time last year because it was so dry. We have it kind of waiting, and if this rain ever ends, we'll be able to start it back up. But that plant, just looking at sort of the fundamental technology that controls it, those control systems date to the mid-1980s, those components. We've got a number of our water quality systems in that plant and our Ralston plant that are circa 1990. So when we talk about reinvestment, some of it is just, you know, these, you know, facilities have served us really well. We've got an outstanding team of operators. But at a certain point, those decades-old components just need to be replaced. And so we're looking hard at that. And then if I wanted to look ahead 10 years, what are we gonna be talking about then? We need to have solved some of our reinvestment problems and addressed some immediate capacity challenges. But I think the big thing is, we're gonna be, you know, starting to really get good forecasts on what build-out looks like for the city. And that will help guide us in terms of our priorities and probably revisiting a master plan at that point. So next slide. So you may also remember from December, I told you 2021 was gonna be a big year for us. It absolutely is. We're sitting here in early May, and we have so much work that has already been accomplished early part of this year. We've added two dedicated engineering staff members. They're excellent. They come in decades of experience, specific to water and wastewater utilities. They're really helping us move some projects forward. But we've got, you know, lots of competing priorities, along with the multiple development projects. It's exciting to see those come in. You may recall Denver Waters had a planned outage of the Ralston Reservoir. Council approved an IGA that would help kind of define what our operating needs for this year, and that's calendared for fall of this year. So I mentioned it here because it changes the day-to-day work of our operations team, just sort of takes them out of their routine. We did a capacity assessment over the last six months or so. I'm gonna jump in and tell you about that in just a little bit after Jaclyn gives you an update. But it was really illuminating for us. And the priority today is to talk about water, the Water Enterprise Fund, the water infrastructure projects. But just as a reminder, you know, this is all under our council strategic result in our strategic plan. And council has directed us to do the water master planning, along with wastewater and stormwater master planning. So I just wanted to mention that we have those other kind of pieces coming together here in 2021. Next slide. So this is my last slide before I'll hand it to Jaclyn. This is the slide we showed you at the end of our December presentation. And so we had talked about how we secured a water supply for the future. Of course, gross reservoir expansion is critical to that. That doesn't happen. We are working on our Plan B. Let me make a comment on Plan B while we're here. All this wonderful wet spring weather, all this rain, our reservoirs are full. And so Plan B that we're, you know, we've kind of been talking about is adding additional reservoir storage. So in weather conditions just like this, we can take more of the water that we are allotted through our water rights and save it for future resiliency and ability to sort of weather future drought. Right now, a great example of us being sort of limited in that area is we've got lots of water going by in the stream that we can't take right now because there's just no space to store it. But having said that, our plans are still to move forward in partnership, of course, with Denver Water and the Gross Reservoir Project. That will secure the additional 3,000 acre-feet of storage we need, what we need. And then following, again, the strategic direction from council, we said we'd develop this plan for the future. And we've fine-tuned that, and that's part of why we're back to be in front of you tonight. We also said that we'd be returning with a financial strategy. There were some questions that council asked us, both in terms of the October rate-setting presentation last year and then also the December workshop. So we've got some, we've done some financial work and planning and want to feel like we're at a good point now to get some feedback from you. So next slide, and I'll hand it over to our city engineer, Jaclyn Rhodes.
Well, thank you, Sharon. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm tasked with giving the progress support update of some of the key capital projects that our team has been delivering. So in the next slide, I just wanted to start by emphasizing that the infrastructure work system has a united relationship between our engineering and our operations team. We're truly looking at the life cycle of all the projects from the planning phase through design and construction, as we operate and maintain our projects and set out those priorities for delivery of our capital program. In the next slide, I just wanted to show how that comes to play. And as Sharon mentioned, we have some new team members that are a part of our engineering team, specifically focused with years of expertise on delivery of utilities engineering projects. And planning for those resources is a key component of what we do. I'm showing here a snapshot of Primavera Cloud, a cloud-based project management platform that our engineering team is launching this year to really do some more forecasting related to the resource needs of our projects. So we both forecast the cash flow and the budget projections for each project, as well as the human resource needs. And we can look to assign and reallocate work across the team and better distribute work to deliver on our promises. In the next slide, I wanted to just direct your attention to the handout in front of you. And in a very 30,000-foot view, in the blue-shaded region here on the slide, shows the projects that we've been launching. As Sharon mentioned, 2021 is a critical year, and we are well underway with beginning delivery of that work. And specifically, what we've done in this handout update is we've moved upward from the unfunded half on the lower part of the handout to the funded half, based off of direction from December, to utilize some of the fund balance to get this work going. There's still some needs ahead that we want to talk about and prioritize as we fine-tune the overall water delivery plan. And those are indicated still in red font in the lower half of the handout as other upcoming needs that we really want to focus on. But over the course of the next few slides, I wanted to at least speak to some of the key highlight projects that I can speak to, key progress over the last six months. Next slide, please. Here are some examples. Our Ralston Raw Water Pump Station and Pipeline Project, in fact, this photo's probably already out of date. I took this photo on-site a couple weeks ago, and we've since have pumps ready to go. So that project is progressing well and ahead of timeline so that we have the ability to deliver water, raw water, to the treatment plant in advance of the Ralston Reservoir outage. Another example of where we've been able to take the opportunity to move projects ahead is constructing a parking lot in the vicinity of the water treatment plant, and also doing an in-house corrosivity study that's going to help us prepare for upcoming regulatory requirements associated with the lead and coker rule and make sure that we're ready and proactive so that we can address our resources, not just in excessive monitoring, but in active optimized treatment control. Next slide, please. Another few examples here, we've recently completed the fluoride system replacement project. And the lower left-hand corner of this slide shows a fixture, a picture of the tank that had to be dismantled and removed piece by piece through that small door that you show there. That tank was leaky, aging, and needed to be replaced. And the next two pictures to the right show the new pumps that have been installed and the new feeder system that is now operational as we're delivering fluoride to the system. To the right is an example of our finished water pump station project that is also occurring really in parallel with the raw water pump station project. So this helps us increase our capacity to boost the treated water from the Ralston Water Treatment Plant site out into the distribution system. And those photos show some pictures of the recently erected building and installed pumps. Next slide, please. Here are some projects that are progressing in the design phase. We'll talk a little bit about storage as part of this project. And one of the key projects that our team is working on is the Highway 93 Water Storage Tank and Pipeline Project, also known as the Sleeping Indian Tank. That project has been bid out, and we're excited to say that we are progressing rapidly to have that tank online for peak season next summer. Other examples of ongoing programmatic work that our team supports is water main replacement programs. And so I show up in the upper corner the 2020 program, which construction is wrapping up, and the 2021 program, which is getting ready for bid. Next slide, please. Other recent projects that you'll hear about tonight are really updates and validation to continue the good work from the water master planning efforts. And so what we've done is we've taken the hydraulic distribution system model, and we've continued to refine it. So we've done some updates to the model, and then we've started to use it to evaluate fire flow, as well as some specific identified projects that were identified in the master planning phase. This is gonna be important work because it helps us identify when and how to time the key needs for our pump station and storage upgrades. Next slide, please. Here are some projects that, again, were previously allocated in the unfunded column, and since December, we've been able to leverage the fund balance to get these projects moving. The Ralston Water Treatment Plant Solids Handling Study and Design Project is underway. This is a key project to help us upgrade our undersized solids handling ponds, which impact our capacity at the treatment plant. Off to the right, other examples of rehab projects associated with improving at the Arvada plant, one of the clarifiers, and at the Ralston plant, the reaction tank. We've done some structural assessment, put out some bids, and are running work to extend the life of those assets. And a key project for our treatment capacity expansion, as well as rehabilitation, is work on our existing filters. So that's a rehab project and an expansion rerating of those filters to get the needed capacity, as well as to replace the media. Next slide, please. Some things you'll hear about are next in the queue to be bid out this summer. We're working on site engineering and reinvestment to address specific structural or settlement needs across the Ralston Water Treatment Plant site, as well as launching into improvements of chemical systems to make sure we have all of the unit process tools in our toolbox to address upcoming needs. So that's an example shown in that photo of the line system that needs to be rehabbed. Next slide, please. So some of the takeaways. The numbers are still significant. While we have a very large funded program that we're actively working on, there's still a number of unfunded needs. We show an approximate split of what we anticipate future needs to be related to capacity and expansion-type projects versus solely rehab and reinvestment projects and a combination of both. Next slide, please. So what's next? Well, our teams are continually working to refine these estimates and program this work. And I think what's important to note here is, we want to talk about, when Sharon showed the word cloud earlier of "safe, reliable, and secure" water supply, what does that mean? We're doing, we're hosting a series of internal level-of-service workshops, so we're all on the same page about what it means to be resilient and secure and compliant with our water supply. We need to evaluate how much and when. And what this means is, we have a lot of certainty in our current hydraulic model and our projections around existing system demands. But as we look at planned growth, we need to do more sophisticated demand forecasting to understand how much capacity we need by when, so that we can better refine our program. And then finally, we need to scope and properly phase the work. So we're not gonna make any major investments without understanding its impact to the current assets and making sure that we're prioritizing those appropriately. So we listed two projects that we've identified that we also want to launch later this year, which continues to focus on the siting study and the treatment expansion planning that needs to occur, and really dialing in those future water demand forecasts so that we can take a look at our raw water supply portfolio and our raw water infrastructure and start to look at more scenario analysis for the future. So I think that's all I had. Next slide, please, and I'll pass it back to you, Sharon.
Thank you, Jaclyn. You can tell there's a lot of work moving forward, which is exciting for us. A lot of work still to do. You know, it takes people to do things, and I can't overemphasize how impactful it's been to bring some folks on the team, Jaclyn included, who have a real depth of technical expertise in these areas we're talking about. So you saw, you know, there's a big list. We're looking at the 10-year CIP model. I'm gonna talk next about some financial planning and recommendations we have. But before we do that, I want to talk about how in this, in this short term, in this near term, we are working to align capacity with the demand and preparing for a build-out. So this is that planning piece. Jaclyn touched on it, really dialing in our forecasting really well. So next slide. This slide and the next one, I actually stole from our community and economic development team. Thank you, Ryan Stotz. The CED and Aura and AIDA folks had a presentation they made in March that highlighted some of the numbers they're using to forecast demand. And so we're working hard to make sure that as we're building infrastructure, we're in lockstep with them in both the short and the long term. So to paint the picture, here's the latest on what build-out looks like. We'll have about 33,000 more people, about 13,000 more households. I love this, 248 acres of commercial space. And so all of that additional demand needs to be programmed into what our water infrastructure is, right? So that's the big picture build-out, the decades out. In the short term, we know it's coming soon, right? These are the airplanes that are queued up, and we can see them coming in the sky, and they're waiting to land. Northwest Arvada and Candellus, of course, got some other projects, Tower Place, Mountain Gateway, Old Town. All of these are coming in with exciting plan development, and we want to make sure that, you know, when those folks move in, that we're prepared with the infrastructure to serve them. Next slide. So this is just how we plan for build-out. We do the master planning. You know, we've been talking with council about this for a number of years now. We're doing that. We're asking the question, do we have enough infrastructure for build-out? We think about all these considerations, the water supply, right? So that's the wet water, that's the water rights, that's the gross reservoir, that's the shares and the ditches and Clear Creek. We talk about our water treatment capacity. That's a lot of the projects Jaclyn's run through with you. Capacity, it's also, you know, replacing things that are at the end of their life. Wastewater capacity, and we're not talking about that a whole lot tonight, but there are some bottlenecks in our wastewater and sewer system that we're looking at. And of course, transportation and other city services, and all these pieces come together. So we can answer that question, right? Like, do we have the infrastructure we need for build-out? Next slide. So I want to focus on this capacity assessment we have done over the last six months. This was done in concert with one of our engineering consultants, Marie Smith. They brought in a national expert to take a look at our existing water model. And when I say "model," it includes our pump stations, includes our tanks, includes our pipes. If you've ever played SimCity, kind of had a SimCity habit there for a while, it's all those pieces that are the distribution system. So we took a look at that, and we looked at what the short and the long-term demand forecasts were gonna be, as best we could tell. We also looked at, you know, what could we do on the operations side, right, to do, you know, adjustments to control systems, move water from this tank to that one, use pump stations in different ranges of pumping, for example. And we used this Marie Smith hydraulic model to answer a lot of questions on how we are, like where are things today in terms of our ability to meet demand? I love this. It's, you know, I say it's state-of-the-art, it's proven. This is the type of technology and toolset that, you know, utility is all over Colorado and the country use to answer these kinds of questions. The summary of our findings, there's some good news. That is, our water line capacity, our pumping capacity, those are sufficient for the next few years. We feel really good about, you know, where we stand with that. But what we discovered is that our storage capacity, is our tanks, is not sufficient to meet our current demand, specifically the challenges around west of Indiana. So more or less, if you can picture where Indiana is in the city, if you go east of Indiana, it's not a perfect straight line, but you go, and that's gravity-fed. So we have tanks, and we can gravity-feed. We've got like a couple little pump stations, but where I live here in Lake Arbor, where I've lived for going on 16 years now, I'm gravity-fed off this system. It's the west side of Indiana...
Mr. Marriott's got a question for you here.
It's the pump side where we've had storage problems.
Great. Mr. Marriott's got a question for you.
Yes.
Sharon, thank you. I just had a quick question about when you said "storage capacity is insufficient to meet current demand." Are we talking about treated water storage capacity or raw water storage capacity?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Marriott. That is specific, the treated water.
Okay.
So I mentioned earlier that our reservoirs full, that's our raw water storage. We're not looking at that right now. It's insufficient, is the actual tank storage. not looking at that right now, it's insufficient, is the actual tank storage that we have.
Thank you.
Yes. And I want to talk about why that matters and what our recommended next steps are here. First of all, Jaclyn mentioned, we have a tank that's already programmed, it's gone to bid. We got our bids back, we're moving forward. That is 12 to 18 months out in terms of being able to serve. That will be, that'll be a huge step forward for us. But in the meantime, we're operating, and this happened last summer, you may recall, we're operating in very challenging conditions to meet peak demand on peak days. So those are the days that are the hottest days of the summer, and everybody's got their sprinklers running, and it's hot. Last summer was exceptional that way, and you all may recall, we had a problem, and we basically redlined our pumps in one of our pump stations, which meant that we spent the winter rebuilding it. We ran those pump stations out of their operating range, and the pumps had to be rebuilt. Cost us about $85,000 just to do that. We explored why that happened. We looked at the pumping capacity, we looked at the water line capacity. Again, through this detailed analysis, we are confident that is not where our problem is. The problem was that last summer, on those very hot peak days, storage was dropping. Our storage tanks have a certain level, and they were dropping, 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 to the point where the pumps tried to make up for it. And the pumps then ran out of their range, and we burned them up. So we've got, we've got some next steps in the short term we want to talk with you about, get your feedback on. So next slide, please. Here's some policy recommendations. But let me, let me say, before I get in, and you can kind of skim it while I'm talking, but I will go through each of them. What we've done is, I think through this quantitative analysis, through this modeling, we've checked all our assumptions. We've checked our assumptions on how much water folks were going to need. We checked our assumptions on what a peak day really meant. How much, you know, how much did we need to plan for, for outdoor irrigation? And what we learned is that we need to adjust these assumptions. And that's exactly part of what we're doing through the detailed design work Jaclyn's talking about. So nothing was missed. It's just that we, we have learned a lot over the last few years, and we've got hot summers, and, you know, there's evidence of climate variability that we just, we have enough data now to give us a preponderance of evidence. We need to make some policy adjustments on how we kind of work through this transitional time and catch up by adding storage. So what our team is recommending is, first of all, leverage the water conservation interest that the community expressed in the last community survey, and working with our communications team, have an engagement campaign around outdoor water use. A day like today, it's really hard to talk about, you know, drought or dry conditions because everything looks so green and wonderful. But we're looking at really stepping up a campaign and talking about outdoor water use and best practices as a communication tool. Specifically, I mentioned, west of Indiana, you have some very specific challenges. That whole west side of Indiana only has about 3 million gallons of storage compared to over 25 million. So we are, we've got about 3 millions of gallons of storage to go by. That new tank's going to give us another million and a half, so it's going to increase 50%. We're going to be so much better when that tank's online. But what's happening now is that there's about 30, perfect timing for my dogs, the 3,600 homes in the pumped area in the northwest are what we're calling our demand management area for the purposes of operations. So what's happening is that what we're going to do is we want to work with our customers in that area, and from June to September, engage them and work with them on scheduling their watering irrigation on alternating days. And the reason that this is so important, and we want to, you know, specifically work with this area of the city, is it spreads out the peak demand. You can talk to my water treatment plant manager, Brad Wyatt, and he'll tell you Mondays and Wednesdays, those are the days that are, you know, challenging us the most. And what's happening is that with those peak days, it's really hard for us to keep the tanks full.
Ms. Ford's got a question for you.
Yep, Ms. Ford.
Hi, Sharon. Sharon, do we have, is there a difference in the city between the eastern areas and the western area with the wind? Does that, with desiccation of the, you know, the plants and as well as the ground, does that affect water use?
No, we, that's a great question. You know, we haven't looked closely at any differences in that respect. What we have observed is that, and it's very common for new development, which is a lot of it's on the west side, a lot of overwatering. And so, you know, what's, whether that reflects an actual demand due to wind conditions and other climate conditions, I can't say. But I can tell you that on the west side, we do have reports and a lot of evidence of overwatering, which, as you may recall, causes some other problems.
Thank you.
So in addition to working with this part of the, you know, these, these members of our community in the pumped zone kind of partner with us through a transitional time while we're building up our storage, we are going to offer technical assistance for those customers overwatering. We have a great partnership with Resource Central. They've been working with us for years. They're offering programs, like not just training, but onsite assistance, smart irrigation controllers that you can control with your phone, and helping, helping not just, and I say overwatering in this bullet, but anybody really who's interested in improving their understanding of how to manage their irrigation system, we would do that. We also are looking at restrictions on hydrant meters. So we haven't done this in a long time, but we're looking at doing it this year in this area. Some of those, like large water trucks that are employed by, like, say, construction contractors, they fill up these large trucks, and they use them for their subsurface sort of soil compaction and just general grading type work. Some of those can actually draw as much water as a small fire truck. They'll pull up 500 gallons per minute. When we're already sort of feeling stress in that area, it's really, it just, it makes that a whole lot worse when we don't have control over when those, those customers just connect to our hydrant. So we'll be working with those customers to identify scheduling and locations where they can fill their trucks. We'll be redirecting them as needed away from this area where we're feeling some stress. And then in general, just working really closely with our community and economic development partners and our development partners on aligning capacity with the schedule for new taps, right? So every new tap that goes on, we're tracking it really closely with our demand management strategy. Our proposal is to do this for two to three years, and get folks accustomed to it until that additional storage is online. And we have some of it coming online next year, but it really, based on our modeling assessment, only catches us up. It doesn't really set us up for the next wave of development. So we're working with Jaclyn and her team to accelerate those sports projects. And we have a team that's already thinking about how to move forward with this policy implementation through education. I mentioned technical support. Council earlier this year approved our first wave of meter replacements. That would be a smart meter replacement. And what that does is, it actually has a, well, it has a free app that you can download on your phone and actually get readings from your water meter. You can see, like, you know, how much are those, like, long teenage showers really costing you? You can get it down to exactly what's happening today, and it offers you some other data on trends. So for those of our customers who really want to, you know, use data on a regular basis to optimize and reduce their water bills, that's something that they can do. We've already started to think about our stakeholders. We're starting with council. We want to make sure that we answer any questions you might have about this. The residents, businesses, I've spoken with Arvada Fire. We've had conversations with metro districts, reaching out to the HOAs, developers, and just helping them understand sort of what, what this policy recommendation means, and also clarifying that what we're recommending really is in the short term to get us through a time until we can get the new storage online. That's a lot. It's a lot of words on the screen. It's a lot there. Not done this kind of thing before here in Arvada, but it's not uncommon to be imposing sort of rules or recommendations, especially around outdoor watering. Let me pause there and ask, are there any questions?
Mr. Marriott, you're first.
Thank you. Sharon, thank you. This is a ton of information. I just have a couple basic questions for you. The first would be, you know, you're talking about the area west of Indiana versus the area east of Indiana. About what percentage of our treated water is delivered via pumping versus just, I'm assuming it's just straight out, straight gravity out of the treatment for the places that are lower?
Yeah, it is. Oh, gosh, I know the storage, but I don't know the million gallons.
Well, I don't need to know how many million, just percentage roughly, if you know that.
Yeah. Oh, gosh. Wish I could phone a friend.
Is it five to one or six to one, or?
I honestly, I don't want to venture a guess.
Okay. No, no problem, that's okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Let me ask you another question. So, you know, I noticed early in one of their earlier slides, there was, you know, some kind of assumptions, and some of the assumptions were, you know, at build-out, we'll have X number of households, and it'll consist of X number of people per household. Do small changes in those things make a big difference down the road, you know, kind of trajectory-wise? Like, you know, if our households end up averaging 2.2 people instead of 2.5, does that make a difference?
Yes. And I'll say that we've got a few different ways that we fine-tune those types of demands for Arvada. So we know that in general, there are some rules of thumb for how many, how much water supply or treatment capacity is needed for a household. But we also have a lot of data on actual usage in our data.
Okay.
So, you know, yes. So the answer is, we've got, you know, I don't know about fine-tuning 2.2 versus 2.5 people, but certainly overall, different categories of residences.
So that's what I was kind of getting at was, how do we compare in actuality to, you know, other similarly situated places or compare to our assumptions? So I would imagine there's national statistics, and maybe for the mountain west even, over, you know, how many gallons per day a household uses and that kind of thing. How do we compare? Are we efficient water users? Do we use more than average? Are we right on the average? How do we stack up?
So we are, I would say, better than the benchmark as far as water efficiency. Part of the reason that we've seen that trend is just, that's what is for sale when you go to replace things at Home Depot in terms of fixtures, toilets, washing machines, that kind of thing. But just to put some numbers on it, you know, I would say even 10 years ago, and some other communities still use this, is they'd say, one acre foot is two households. Based on recent data in Arvada, we're getting somewhere between 2.7 and three households out of an acre foot.
Okay.
So absolutely, we're seeing trends and reduction of abuse per household.
And are those trends likely to continue, or will we reach a point where that kind of stops?
I would say the last couple of years, we've seen it level off. I think it would take a significant change in technology before we see a whole, a whole lot more decrease. And I just say that because, again, that's what's on the market. Having said that, the, you know, the state imposed some legal requirements on what you can sell for your irrigation systems. So it's possible that'll be a disruption, and we'll see a change there. But if I had to guess, we're not going to do a whole lot better than three households per acre foot.
Okay. And then, and then last question, it seems like the, the place where we're currently running into treated water capacity issues is a hot summer day when lots of irrigation is going on. And it seems to me that particularly in the communities out in the northwest, we have irrigation of people's individual yards, but we also have irrigation of common areas or entrances around subdivisions, you know, things like that. Do we have any idea what the breakdown of that usage might be? Is that, is it a significant, you know, do those break 50/50, or is it 90/10 people's yards? I mean, is there any, what I'm getting at, is there any, is there any low-hanging fruit with changing the standards by which common areas around subdivisions are developed?
You know, that's, that's something we haven't dug into the data on. You know, typically, we're, you know, and I'm just looking at what our water bills look like for the different types of customers. And, you know, if I had to guess, I would say, you know, better than half of our demand up there is from single-family homes. But I want to talk about that answer in the context of the recommendation before you. The way that we're proposing moving forward with this is each meter has an address, whether it's a single-family home, whether it's a common area. In our database of all the meters, they have an even or an odd address. And so our thought is that we're not just seeing single-family homes to ask to follow this watering schedule. We're talking about all of our own city facilities, the metro district, common areas, the HOAs. We'd be asking for everybody to pitch in.
Okay. Thank you.
And I want to tell you that Chris Cantman, I want to give a shout-out to Chris Cantman, who's our water operations manager, he sent me a text message and said 15% is a good number of our total demand is in the pumped zone.
Right. Thank you. You were able to ask a friend and got the answer. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Thank you. So, so your policy here that you're looking for, number two, you're talking about putting restrictions only into the northwest part of the city?
In that pumped zone, yes.
And what is, it's only one pumped zone, which is what? What is that?
Well, it is actually, when I say a pumped zone, it's the pumped side of the city. And I'm looking at that, because I have a whole map up here. There's a series of pumped areas that are served from the Ralston Tank up in the northwest, the Candellas Tank that's on Candellas Parkway. All of the water that's served kind of through that far northwest in those areas, north of the railroad tracks, west of Indiana, all of the water has to go through just those, primarily just through those two tanks.
Okay.
So, so that's where we're feeling the most concerned, I would say, about being able to meet the peak demand patterns that happened last summer.
So I believe in the PDP that no one is allowed to have more than 50% grass on their property. So it has some of the most strict zero-scaping in the city, and you're saying we have to put the most restrictions on the most enforced zero-scaping in the city? Okay, so.
It's all new landscape, though.
I get it's all new, but it's more than 50% of it is zero-scaped. Not like Lake Arbor, or, you know, even my old neighborhood on Ward Road, where you have almost 100% grass on your, on all your open area. So also, there's a lot of native areas in this area, thinking of Light and Rock as well. So we're putting restrictions on these areas that the city has already placed some sort of zero-scaping requirement. And then we changed zoning from commercial to residential when I've specifically asked about water demand. And now we're worried about water demand in the same area I questioned water demand, and then we're adding 600 and some homes to this area. And so we're going to tell the citizens in this area that, well, because we changed the zoning and because we didn't keep up with our infrastructure, we're going to put restrictions on all of you. And oh, by the way, you only had 50% zero-scaping. And oh, by the, you know, I'm a little worried, the message we're trying to tell the northwest part of the city with all of these rules. So I want to understand what, we need to either get ahead of this issue, or we need to stop approving residential development in this area till we to stop approving residential development in this area till we can get our infrastructure to support it properly. Now, I can say there's could be a chicken and egg, I'll throw you a bone on it, because if you don't have your TAP fees, you don't have the money to probably reinvest into your infrastructure for capacity. So I hesitate with your proposal here, because knowing all of the things we've done, we've almost created our own problem. And then we're going to have the citizens in this area to tell that we're going to put restrictions on you. I think we need to think about this a little bit more. So right now, I'm not a big fan of where we're going with this conversation. And then it's going to take you how much longer? I get it's new landscaping. New landscaping, it's almost built out, but we should have known. And there should have been some conversation around changing commercial area to 600 homes, and then now we have a capacity problem in this area. So I don't know. Maybe there's some thoughts of how we can avoid this in the future, and how we can have a better conversation around this, so we're not sitting here with a dilemma that could impact, you know, tens of millions of dollars of capital investment to make up for, for us allowing development in an area that wasn't able to support, the infrastructure was not able to support it. So I don't know what the answer is to my comments and thoughts, but I'm not a fan of our policy of what we're going to put on, on the folks in this area based on our, maybe, I'll just say it, I just think there's some, maybe some missed opportunities in planning better. And maybe the curve ball was we change the zoning in an area. But I think council needs, needs to think about this seriously.
Thank you. Lauren Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. So Sharon, great presentation. Thank you so much.
We're only halfway through it, so.
Thank you so much. So I actually wanted to come to the slide that looks at TAP fees. And I did send an email about this earlier, so we're not blindsided. But, so I wanted to discuss the TAP fees for your single family homes, which are $19,275 versus this area that we've been discussing that has additional burdens and challenges to getting water to it, the areas that actually make it harder to get water. So your Whisper Creek, your Leyton Rock, which are $7,325, almost a full third of what they are for your single family homes that are downstream with less issues. So can you just walk me through why those TAP fees are so different? And just explain that a little bit better, please?
Yes, I'm happy to. And Councilmember Pfeifer, I'd like to speak to some of what we're doing in response to your, your concerns. We're concerned about them too. Let me talk about the way, kind of, this might answer both questions, but the way that we are looking at answering this question of do we have enough capacity? And we started it through the master planning process. And what we learned is that we have different demand patterns, different assumptions that we need to make now when it comes to actual adequately having the capacity to deliver. So I want to be clear that we're good on treatment, we're good on pipes, we're good on pump stations. And what we've learned, and especially through last summer, is that assumptions we made over how much demand was going to be coming in on those peak summer days, we needed, we needed to make some adjustments. And we've learned from that. And I'd like to talk about some next things we're doing, but I think it ties to Councilmember Simpson's question too. The last time we fully evaluated TAP fees, we made some assumptions there too, that about 62% of the TAP fee went to water supply. I don't think I have it here. I'm speaking from my post-its. About 62% came from water, went for water supply, 23% for this distribution capacity, and about 15% for treatment. So I mentioned that because those are numbers that we need to go back and reassess. But the reason that there are deep discounts on certain TAP fees are primarily around water rights. And so we had developers come in, they brought us water rights, we gave them a credit toward TAP fees based on the assumed value at the time of what those water rights would be able to yield from. With the new information coming in from these master plans, the costs and assumptions that we have for the infrastructure that we need, including the additional storage that we need sooner than we thought, we're going to propose revisiting TAP fees. There are some of those discounts, Councilmember Simpson, that are also around assumptions that developers would build a certain amount of infrastructure for us.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Because as we know, when you build something, typically the cost for the builder gets passed along to the buyer. So in terms of affordability, my concern is around a higher TAP fee for what might be a smaller infill property on the east, north, or south side of the city versus a larger property on the west side of the city. And then a quick follow-up question is just, when a developer brings to us some water rights in exchange for a discount on those fees for the building costs, and those fees perhaps, or those rights don't perhaps be held up in court, is there a recompense for the city, or is the city absorbing those costs then?
So to your, to your point specifically, just to kind of put some context on it, some of the water rights that the developers brought to us were unchanged. And so what that means is a term of art in the water rights world is that they are only good for irrigation unless you go to water court and make the case that you can change them for municipal use. So we accepted them with frankly, an understanding that's held, was held by many as recently as 10 years ago, that you could count on water court giving you similar yield for your water rights than what you had in previous cases. And there's some major policy changes that have happened at the state level, and we're seeing it through both the State Engineers Office and the courts, that no one, not just our VADA, but no one in the Clear Creek Basin and even into the South Platte, is getting as much yield from these change cases as we assumed we could before. So as far as, you know, what the city's doing, we haven't made any adjustments so far, but through, and I'll get to this with some of the financial recommendations we have, but doing an actual TAP fee study later this year, so we can revisit the assumptions on discounts, revisit the assumptions on how much water yield we got from the shares that came from each of the developments, revisit, you know, the actual infrastructure costs based on our latest planning. So one thing we don't do, Councilmember Simpson, and but other communities do to try to, I think, provide a sort of a different level of parity, if you will, for TAP fees for smaller lots versus larger ones. What we don't do is we don't adjust a single family TAP fee based on lot size or any type of irrigation design. So I wanted to just let you know that. That's, that's not something that's been our VADA's policy. And in no small part because we run a really lean shop, and I'm proud of that. But it also means that, you know, we're very limited in terms of our internal resources to do that type of tailoring of water.
Thank you, Sharon. And I know you guys do run a lean shop, and we appreciate all the work that you do every day.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can we hop back up? Maybe, I want to make sure I've got, yeah, okay. So this is what we're planning to move forward with, understanding that there's, it's a very sensitive topic. Councilmember Pfeifer, I do want to speak briefly to just let you know, our team is spending a lot of time thinking about this not being imposed as a restriction. That's not the word that we're using. But that we want to talk with them about why we would ask them to, our neighbors in that area, to water on alternate days. And again, the reason is that it spreads out the peak across the week, instead of having like two big days on Monday and Wednesday. And, and so we are looking to, we are striving to find the right way to communicate that in a way that, that's seen as both short-term and also part of what the city needs in the way of demand management right now.
Mr. Pfeifer.
Wish it were different.
Yeah, but not only you're saying other days, but you're also saying only three days a week on top of that, right? And I think also I get stuck on is use the word "policy," which usually means councils push this policy. So you're saying there's no financial burden on any of these folks? Because, I mean, the average person is spending to do 50% zero scape and meet that, or spending anywhere between $25,000 to $80,000 for their landscaping. And these are new developments that are trying to get the trees that are required by the city to place on the property to be watered and survive. Now we're going to tell them, well, you don't have the water to do what we are requiring you to do in the PDP. It's like, you're forced to put certain landscaping on, but you're also then slapped for trying to take care of landscaping that's enforced on the property. I, I'm not, I'm not sure that's a good message for our citizens in that area. Because not all of them wanted required trees and detached sidewalks. Not everyone wanted any grass on some of their, their properties. Some people, you know, the certain trees that were forced on them. And then the trees aren't surviving because they can't water them, and then they're being forced to replace the trees at $400 a tree. And then, oh, by the way, now you can't water your trees to get them to take. So I don't know what the message is, but it's, I'm going to tell you, it's going to, when somebody spends $85,000, $100,000 on their landscaping to zero scape what they can, and then told that they can't water, it's going to, I think you're going to get, we're going to get some pushback on it.
I am, I'm making some notes. These are things we'll take, take back to our communications team for sure. I mean, I, I think where, where we're trying to find the right tone, and incorporating your comments, I appreciate that, is not to be alarmist, but it is urgent. We do not have enough capacity in this area for everybody to water on Mondays.
No, I get it. You want to spread it out. Maybe it's just a different way of approaching this, not using the word "policy" for one, two, don't limit to the three days, four, use odd and even addresses, like you mentioned. I mean, those things, that doesn't work for me being at the end of the line, because all of, every house in our area is a zero at the end in the whole cul-de-sac. So that doesn't work for us. So we will screw the end of that line anyways. But, you know, just be aware, I don't think it's as easy as that either. And I think I can already hear my neighbors in the community complaining about what this message could be. So we just need to be more thoughtful when we ask that we're doing development and we're saying, yeah, we are good with water, let's be, let's be really clear what that means to us as council who's making decision up here, that no, we can support it, but there is going to be a $10 million investment to stay up with the demand in the area. Not that our supply's okay, but we also have infrastructure that we've got to get ahead of before these folks show up with their house. And then told, well, you've got to have landscaping within one year on your property. That is a requirement, again, by the PDP. And then they go put new landscaping in, and then now we're telling them, well, you can't water it.
It's.
It's, just make sure you're working with community development, because I think you're contradicting what has been forced on the PDP.
Thank you for that. And I think especially on the comments about new landscaping and messaging. Here's the thing, we've got water, we've got treatment capacity. We don't have enough of that resilience in our system to meet peak demand like we did last summer. So thank you, and certainly, all your comments are well taken in understanding that, you know, we actually have, have a number of folks here internal to the city that live in that area. Okay, well, I'd like, I'd like to spend some time now on some financial recommendations. Understanding what I just presented to you is recommendations, and what we're looking to do are around our short-term needs. But I, I'm going to jump right now into the financial needs analysis. And I'm going to run through some of it, I think, you know, just sort of some background. Please do stop me if you've got specific questions. Next slide. So you saw this slide up, I think, a few minutes ago. Just to ground you guys in some numbers, we got a little over $36 million in total revenue into our enterprise fund in 2020. As a reminder, the enterprise fund stands alone and separate from any other enterprise fund, and also from the general fund. And we have the fiduciary responsibility to, to make sure that the money we collect through sources of revenue into this fund is used only for water infrastructure, water operations, water-related expenses and costs. Last year, of this $36.5 million, a little over 3% came from service fees. We have not increased our service fees since 2009. And that is presenting some challenges for us that we're, we'll be talking about here in a minute. 69% of our revenue last year came from rates, so that's the actual water that we sell. Last week, I put together a graph, you may recall seeing it, that we have, in this last few weeks, we've produced less than half of the demand we did at the same time this, this week last year. What that means is that from a rates perspective and this revenue, we collected less than half the revenue over the last few weeks because it's raining, which is great. And also, it has some impacts directly on our revenue sources. So this rates one is the one that fluctuates a lot. And then about 13% of our revenues last year came from TAP fees, which is great. However, it was below our forecast by about $2 million. If you're doing the math, the other, the rest of the revenue here, about 14% comes from miscellaneous fees, earnings, interest on investments. And then we do get a few dollars transferred in from other funds. That helps us sort of balance our FTE that perform multiple functions across different funds. So next slide. You may recall, this is a slide I showed you back in October last year, when we were making a rate recommendation. And thank you, council, for seeing fit to approve that. We base this chart on an estimated amount of water that a single family home would use over the course of a year. And so it forms a baseline that we can use when comparing our rates to everyone else's. And so based on this analysis we presented in October, our VADA sits at about $443 a year total cost for water service for a typical demand, far lower than our neighbors, as you'll recall. Next slide. This is some information Councilmember Simpson asked me some questions about. And we are looking at TAP fees when we're looking at how do we close that gap of $210 million in the next 10 years? It seems, it's just so big. I mean, how are we going to get our arms around it? I want to say it's about 55% of that unfunded amount is, is associated with capacity building projects. So philosophically, what we're looking for is to have capacity building projects paid for either from TAP fees or developer contributions. So it's five years since we looked at this closely. We have done a lot of work in five years, all the master planning work. Also, the costs are escalating for gross reservoir. And so these current TAP fees are based on a $24,000 per acre foot raw water cost. The new water coming in from gross reservoir is going to run us about $37,000 per acre. So we're looking at this, though, and again, this is just the snapshot of a single family home in our VADA that gets constructed. If it's not in one of the, the development areas that has a discount right now, you're right, just under $20,000 per home.
Ms. Ford's got a question.
Yes, Ms. Ford.
Sharon, I have a couple of thoughts running in my head at the moment while you're speaking. One is with the, getting back to Mr. Pfeifer's concern on the west side there. So basically, what we're, we would be doing is decreasing the amount of rate, rate, rate fees, or that's not the right word. The water usage would go down, so we wouldn't make as much money in selling the water, right? So we're sort of, is that, is that a good way of saying we're robbing Peter to kind of, or we're kind of, you know, stopping the watering because we don't have the ability the watering because we don't have the ability, that pumping capacity, right? But yet we're going to make less money in selling water because they're going to use less water. So that's going to, that's figured into your calculations, right, in terms of less money coming in?
That, that is a factor. We always have a certain amount of variability built in to our assumptions in our model on how much water we're going to sell. The, the difference with what we're proposing in the pumped zones this summer is that we're not necessarily asking for folks to use less water. Although they, those folks are overwatering, you know, maybe don't have their systems dialed in. Our, our priority is more about not draining the tanks so fast. So, so there, I would expect there would be some type of a difference in projected revenue going this way. But, but we're really not asking folks to do an actual, like, restriction to the amount that they're, that they're using.
And then the other question I had, looking at the tap fees, looking at the difference in type of, of tap fee. So my understanding is, and in our VADA, we generally prefer one tap fee when we're doing multiple, a, a multiple family structure, correct? So we, we're sort of losing money there in a sense. I'm thinking about my own HOA, for example, where we don't, where a building has one.
Yes. And what we'll do is even if, well, let me back up and say the, the, the time when we allowed one meter for a, a number of multifamily units is behind us. We really are metering by a single townhome, for example, and installing meters on each. But you can see here in the table on the slide, we do account for, you know, a duplex or a multifamily residence using, you know, basically less, less water and also less capacity of our infrastructure. I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, kind of. And I think that kind of speaks to what Lauren was saying too, right? About the different tap, taps that, yeah, based on size to size of property and everything.
Right. And, and when I, I, you know, was kind of doing some research, planning for a tap fee study this year, again, our assumption for that, of that tap fee, almost two-thirds of it is to pay for the water supply itself. And then the other about third is to pay for all the infrastructure. And so we're just looking through the, doing a tap fee analysis, looking at, at, you know, what would be the right size. You know, through a tap fee study, we could look at other models. You know, I've heard, I, I hear a lot, frankly, that, you know, a, a, a large lot versus a small lot, you're just, you have a different kind of impact on the system. The challenge is that we, we lower some and have to raise others. And, and, and so we're, we just, I don't feel like we've done, we just haven't done the study yet to figure out, you know, what kind of numbers we're talking about. But I can tell you though, is that our current tap fees, they're based on outdated assumptions. And that is something that we really want to hit hard this year as we're looking at the 10-year model and the challenges we have, especially to, to add capacity to our system. It's, I'm going to throw rough numbers out to you, but let's say it's the $210 million that Jaclyn mentioned in her presentation. 55% of that is allocated for capacity. So we need to find that $100 million for capacity projects in very rough numbers. One of the ways we can do that is through, one of the ways we need to do that is through tap fees. Another way that we are working on that is through developer contributions.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, are you, I'm sorry, is there still a question going on?
Go ahead, Mr. Pfeifer.
So, so Sharon, with you just saying that, you said out of the tap fee, 62% is water supplies, 23% is distro, 15% is for treating, right? That's out of the tap. So.
That's, that's the current breakdown.
Breakdown. So I know you're going to try to readdress it to catch up, but I think the concern I have with that is, you know, we're going to get to build out here very soon. And other, if we're having redevelopment happen, then, then that would hap, you know, then we can catch up. But with, you know, 62% and 23%, you know, 62% going to supply and 23% going to distro, how, how do you think we're going to plan in the future when the distribution is already struggling as it is? And if the tap fees are, are going to, you know, taper off? And, and I know we have some of the lowest rates here, but I think we have a dilemma that's going to be coming up in the near future regarding sustainability of distribution and treatment and to build out. So, you know, hopefully we're staying focused on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Pfeifer. There's no easy answer for that. That's the challenge of utilities across the country. We've got a couple of recommendations I'm going to get to that I think start to point us in the right direction as far as that goes. So I'll, I'd like to, I'd like to speak to that. One, one way to sort of look at it is that we're not going to get tap fees anymore at some point. And we're going to still need to take care of infrastructure that's treats. Let me put another number out there for you. $750 million. That's the value of the water rights in today's market that we used last year. $750 million. And so these numbers are big and without, you're right, without, you know, a, a revenue stream like the tap fees that started to help, helps provide the dollars we need for building the infrastructure, we're going to need dollars to reinvest to down the line. So we're absolutely, I want to assure you, we're absolutely keeping that top of mind. Any more comments on this one? Got a few more slides.
Keep moving.
All right, keep moving. Next slide, please. I wanted to remind you that based on our current plans and paying gross reservoir here over the next few years, that we are then going to have a fund balance on an annual basis of about $10 million a year. So not a whole lot of reserves after gross reservoir is paid for. This is just where we stand today. Next slide. So a lot of words again. Here's the challenges from our financial needs assessment. The $212 million of unfunded CIP projects. Jaclyn mentioned those to you. You can refer to your handout. It's the list of projects on the bottom half of the sheet. One of our challenges is having sufficient engineering staff for the project management and technical leadership to actually execute those projects. I can't emphasize enough how important it is that we have really built a strong work group now with some new hires that specialize in this kind of thing in-house. I mentioned to you that the gross reservoir expansion is costing us $37,000 per acre foot. Our tap fees assume $24,000. Let me mention here, if you go up north, you're going to pay $50,000 an acre foot easily. So this 37, while it's an escalation from what we're used to here, I'll tell you, I know folks who would be lining up to get the deal that we're getting for gross reservoir here. $37,000 is a great rate in today's market. We have the estimated on the high end, $120 million due for gross reservoir. We're expecting that expansion to be totally done by 2028, at which time we have to pay off the final amount. And then this is something reflecting on a slide a few back. Remember how I said we had about 3.5% of our revenue from fixed service fees? Everything else kind of fluctuates. What we're hearing from the industry benchmarks from the American Water Works Association, from our peer groups in this, you know, metro area, best practice is about 15 to 20% of utility revenue from fixed fees. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One is it just reduces the, you know, the year-to-year variability and provides us some more stability with revenue. But just as important, perhaps more important, is that this is what agencies who are issuing municipal bonds for folks like us, they're looking for a more consistent source of revenue to ensure that we can make the, the payments back. And so just, we're looking at a lot of those things. Let's go to the next slide.
Mr. Marriott's got a question first.
Sharon, let me interrupt you real quick with that last point that you were making about best practices are 15 to 20% of the water utility coming from fixed fees. And ours is, of course, way below that. So I understand on one side, there's kind of industry benchmarking and all that. And I guess I would want to know much more in depth about that for the next time we talk about, about these to help make a good decision. Because then I also understand the, the potential for fitting into the box a little better when it comes to potentially bonding for, for future, future revenue. And we certainly want to consider that. But on the other hand, I think the, one of the things that suit would, would make the future situation better is conservation. And the incentive to conserve generally comes as a financial incentive and nothing else. That's really the incentive that works. And so the fact that our, our rate payers pay more of their rate based on their usage and less of it based on a fixed fee encourages conservation more. So I think there's a, a give and take to that. And, and I wouldn't feel very comfortable just going with a, a best practice or a average of others or anything like that. I would, I would want to look at that more in depth for the next time we talk about what that might be. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Happy to do that. Thank you, Councilmember Marriott. It is something that my predecessor examined. He did a, a great study in 2018 and sort of looked at a lot of different models. It was something that he, he identified actually in the 2018 rate study that it was a nascent sort of model. And it was something that was emerging as a, more of a standard in the community. So just in the last few years, there's a lot of additional resources. Happy to speak to you more about that one next time I have the opportunity. Any more comments on this one?
Keep going.
We have lots of, yes. Go on? Okay.
Yes, please.
Yes. Okay. So this is the, this is the final piece to our presentation tonight. Here's some recommendations we're making for the budget. As you know, I go to, I bring to city council, just like Jim Sullivan before me, an annual recommendation for rates and revenues. I plan to do that again this year, but there's some things that we want to talk with you about and introduce ahead of the formal presentation that'll come. So next slide. We've got recommendations for 2022 and then also for 2324. So I'm going to start, I'm going to refer back to this slide a couple of times. But for 2022, we have a recommendation to adjust the water service charge, that's the fixed fee, by $2 a month. That would bring it up to $4.92 a month. This has, we have a few different needs in this area. But the bottom line is that it would help us move toward a higher benchmark, but it also would help us close some immediate, immediate gaps we have for CIP and reinvestment. The big proposal that we have, it's a new idea and concept to bring tonight, is introducing an infrastructure reinvestment fee. And we are proposing to do that at $2 a month also. Councilmember Pfeifer mentioned a few minutes ago, you know, what are we going to do in the future when we have all these reinvestments? We don't have tap fees anymore. The concept behind this recommendation is that it starts to have a special pot of money that we can use to do our reinvestment projects. So I'd like to go to the next slide before I talk through everything else. Because I, I want to spend a few minutes telling you about this proposal and then get your feedback because it would be part of our formal rate presentation early, later this year. We're at $2.92 a month now. That is $10 less per month than the median of our neighboring cities. We have not adjusted our service fee since 2009. We have adjusted it 77 cents since 1986. So we really haven't touched this. By adding additional $4 a month, so that would be $2 for the service fee ongoing operations and $2 for a new fee that would add to our ability to fund capital reinvestment projects would take us to $6.92 a month. Again, the median and, and the neighborhood being $1,293. So go to the next slide because I, you know, this, I want to remind you guys, I'm a resident here too. I've been a resident here for a long time. So I'm talking about my water bills as well as everybody else's. By doing this, it would be an additional $48 a year. And so I wanted to show council if we were to move forward with a fee adjustment like this. This is the same slide I showed you a few minutes ago. It shows that if we added $48 a year right now to our 2021 benchmark annual fees for water, we'd be at $4.91. That is still lower than everybody else was in 2020. So I know that I, I'm sensitive to our desire to keep water rates low. That is in our strategic direction from the strategic plan. We're not looking to, we're not looking to abandon in any way our, our culture and our ethic of being lean. It's a point of pride. You know, we've got parts and pieces to replace all out of parts and pieces for our old stuff. And we would still be lean. This isn't gold plating anything, but it does help us close some significant gaps. So I wanted to just put it out there in context if we were going to move forward with adjusting our, our service fees this year. Can you go back two slides, please, Kevin? Back to this one? Yeah, thank you. So, so the recommendation again in the near term is to get us to $4 more a month. From a 10-year budgeting perspective, that is, it's approximately $20 million over the course of the 10-year model. And so what that does is it helps, you know, take that, you know, $210 million, takes $20 million off of that. So it's kind of 10% of what our needs are. But we feel like that's a good next step. Our goal being, you know, with the understanding of Council Marriott, Councilmember Marriott's questions about why would we benchmark to 15%? That's something that we would be looking at, you know, in the out year, sort of the next budget cycle, not, not immediately. If we can do that with our service fees, we, we propose somewhere in the neighborhood of a similar rate increase as previous years to, you know, just to keep us up with cost of living. We would be doing, conducting a tap fee study as we've talked about a bit this evening. And then something I want to make sure I spent at least a few minutes on is that there are other sources of funding. You guys are hearing about it from the federal level. There is money coming into the Colorado Water Grant Program from Colorado Water Conservation Board. There's money coming into EPA through their water infrastructure funding program. There's money coming in through the state revolving funds. There's a lot of influx of water infrastructure dollars. And we are really trying to figure out how to get our VADA on those lists and get us competing for some of that, some of that money. So that's something else we'll be doing in 2022. So that when we return to you for the formal budget process in the next two-year cycle, we want to be talking to you about potentially issuing a bond, depending on how much, you know, this, this new federal infrastructure dollars we can get. Something I feel really strongly we want to do is audit the cost allocations for the enterprise fund. This is just good practice when you're dealing with enterprise funds. But, you know, make sure that we're taking a good, hard look at how, you know, everything's getting paid for. We're looking at potentially proposing indexing our service charges to a percentage of fixed costs. I think this is in alignment with some similar types of, of fee, fee conversations that we've had with the city team in recent years to just really look at our fees and our fee schedule. And then again, looking at an infrastructure reinvestment fee, that would be a portion of our, our overall revenue. And I know we're not ready to talk about bonding today. We're not ready to talk about taking loans out. taking loans out. But we did a, just a real quick model that if we did a 25-year loan, $100 million, at three and a half percent, that's a good planning number for us. The annual payment's about $6 million. So we've got some more to do if we're going to fully fund this work. So let me, let me ask you to just jump to the last slide, I think. That's my, oh, no, wait, this one, yeah. This is the timeline. So here, here's where we're sitting now. We're looking at service fees really for the first time in 12 years. We're doing this budget development over the next couple of months. The latter part of the year, we'll conduct the tap fee study, as we've discussed. Come the fall in October, we'll be bringing to you the recommendations for the rate ordinance and those formal budget presentations. And then looking up early next year, implementing the results of the tap fee study, so we can start to right-size the, the money coming in to pay for our capacity needs. And then looking again in '23 and '24, more details on a financial plan for bonding and fees. So that's really, that, that wraps up where I wanted to, you know, information I wanted to bring to you tonight. We will continue to be working on this over the next few months. So next slide, please. This is my last one. This is why we're doing it. So what we have here in the, the city team, incredibly proud to work with Jaclyn Rhodes, her team, their new utilities engineers, everything we're bringing forward to you tonight. We strongly believe that this is the direction for the city to, to take, so that we can continue to provide reliable water for all these things you see.
Thank you, Mr. Marriott.
That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I just, a couple of final comments from me. I think, you know, where the, the rubber meets the road here is the potential for fee increases this year, particularly in this coming budget process, as well as then we'll have our customary rate, look at, look at rates and look where that applies. And since that's something obviously we don't do very often, it's been a couple decades since that's happened, I, I think I would like to see more information before I'd be willing to make decisions on that. And particularly what I'd like to see is, you know, what you sketched out may very well be the preferred course of action. I wouldn't doubt that it is. However, with a big decision like this, that obviously doesn't get made very often, I would want to see several different scenarios maybe presented to us about, well, if you don't raise fees, we would need to raise rates this much instead. I understand that dedicating a fee to, you know, infrastructure reinvestment, but, but that can be done other ways too, out of rates, a percentage of rates, or, you know, a fraction of rate, or something like that. So I think that's a fairly big decision, big policy decision for us as a community. And, and I would like to see, you know, kind of a little more maybe in-depth on that particular part of this. I think you did a great job outlining the big picture and, and letting us know where we're at. But trying to decide on exactly what the best course of action going forward when it comes to the fees is, is I think important. And I think it's maybe a little more far range, it has a little bigger effects than we're picturing as we sit here. I mentioned earlier, you know, the conservation aspect of it. I think we have to think about, you know, the, the equity part of it, about the, the folks who, who are small users will pay a greater percentage if the fees are higher versus heavier users who will pay a, a less percentage as, as, if that has the effect of keeping the rates down, the usage rates down. So I just think there's a lot to talk about there and, and would like to see more before we make decisions on it.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like us to first make sure our messaging is clear, because what, let me just tell you what I wrote down. We're not limiting the amount of water they use, but restricting when. So if we're addressing overwatering, then that statement, that quoted statement is, is inaccurate. So that alone confuses me. If you said we're not limiting the amount, but we're restructuring when, or restricting when they can use it, that confuses me. Because you don't want them to overwater. We should be restricting the limit, limit the amount of water if we're trying to address overwatering. So that'll, that right there causes some confusion in your messaging. So before we can go any further, we need to get, get that clarified and, and how we want to say that, assuming we support everything of your proposal here. The other thing is, is I think this is an opportunity that when we look at development, I've always struggled with getting clear insight of what those impacts are on the infrastructure, specifically around water. And I specifically asked this several times. And what I would like to start seeing in our readouts is, when we get a proposed development of 640 homes, that we know what those impacts are and what are we signing up? Now granted, they may pay their way, but there is still a indirect and possibly a direct impact to everyone else around that development. Because, because of our decisions to allow certain development in the northwest part of our city, we are now impacting those that live in this area, because now we're telling them that we are restricting when you can use the water on the, the yard we are forcing you to do within 12 months of purchasing your home. So I would like to start seeing some way, somehow, when you propose a development, we would like to know what is the impact on our water infrastructure. It needs to be like black and white, just like when fire signs off and schools sign off. I would like to know what is the infrastructure impact and what do we need to plan for? Because it's not fair to the communities, including where I live, that I'm going to have to end up suffering or paying or, or, you know, and I paid $57,000 for my yard to tell me that now I have to let it die. Oh, and then probably get a ticket by the metro district, because I did that. Because of our, I'm going to just say the, the lack of maybe planning or foresight of making sure the infrastructure is there to support the change in our development plans in that area. And so, when we have these really impactful conversations, and specifically we brought up water in them, we've got to be crystal clear. We've got to highlight, bold, underline, change the font to red, to say, okay, we're changing from commercial that uses X amount of water to now residential that uses 1.5 more water. This will impact our, our distribution by X, and we need to, we would need to start moving on that now. And I'm, I'm telling you, that did not happen in this conversation at all. I'm not saying it's anyone's fault, but man, I just wish we were there a little bit better. So I would, I would encourage that when we look at developments, no matter if it's infill, it's multifamily, that we should know what the impacts are to our water system moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may, I, you know, I, I echo that, that desire to have that type of fine-tuned analysis as we're bringing development in. The consultant that helped us build this model over the last few months has offered us some suggestions on how to do just that. Nobody frankly wants to be in a situation like we are. And so we are putting in place the types of analysis we feel like we need to do, so it doesn't happen again. Thank you for your comments, and, and especially Councilmember Pfeiffer. Our, our team will be very sensitive to comments around new landscaping and how that messaging lands with folks who are trying to establish landscaping that, to your point, is very, very costly initial investment.
Yeah, and, and thank you, I mean, thank you Sharon for all of this. I mean, I do appreciate it. Just, let's just be thoughtful as we walk through it. And remember, we've created PDPs and so forth and restrictions on these developers and homeowners that we, we're, I don't want to contradict ourselves, we'll look like a fool in front of these folks, when we tell them they have to do a certain way and then turn around and, and do something that's contradicting the other. So I don't know how you want to maneuver through that minefield, but I, I support you trying to get through it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of final points. First of all, you know, we're doing, of the, of the people who are going to be coming here, the additional households, frankly, I think a greater percentage of those are going to be in multifamily settings, where the water usage is not as high as it is for, you know, the single-family quarter acre lots. So I'm not going to be as doom and gloom as perhaps some of this portrays itself to be. Secondly, I'm really looking forward to the phone calls that we're going to get and the emails when a certain portion of our citizens are going to be paying a higher fee charge for their water bill, coupled with a minimum service fee for trash hauling. We're going to get beat up. So with that, and, and, and poor Ms. Gillis is sitting back there going, yep, yep, we're going to be dealing with that too, so. Okay. Mr. Devon, do you have what you need?
Yes, I would like to say. One other thing to the council and also to Sharon and to Jaclyn. This was a particularly tough issue for us to work through. We've been working through it for the last few months as we have been updating our water models, complying with the city council's direction in the strategic plan to update our, our water master plan, as well as our other utility master plans. And it, it, the very act of doing that presented us with new information that was in some respects unsettling. However, the pledge I have to make to all of you is I never can hide that information. I've got to bring it forward. I've got to bring it forward with courage and with conviction and with steadfastness and, and present it to you, even if it's not necessarily good news. And Sharon and Jaclyn have made the same commitment to the rest of the organization and to all of you as well. So it, it, this is, this is certainly new, updated information based on the water, new water demand management information that we have. We can't hide it. We've got to bring it forward. We've got to have the conversation. We've got to have the tough conversations, and we've got to work through it together to figure out where we're going to go. Councilmember Pfeiffer, we hear you loud and clear, and, and I, I don't live in Candellis, but I live near Candellis, and I...
And I'd just say to, to add, if you, we can learn.
Right.
Don't, just because, you know, this is not good news in some of our eyes, at the end of the day, if we can learn and do better from it.
Right.
Then that's a good thing. And how do we get it back on its rails?
Exactly.
That's all I'd add.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Exactly. So anyway, thank you for being open and, and to this. And, and also want to thank Sharon and Jaclyn for the hard work that they've done over many months to bring this forward and to have this conversation with all of us. So, thank you.
Yep, I'll certainly echo that. Ms. Ford?
Well, I, I wanted to add the comment that I think it's, it's a really nice goal for any city to be as efficient as it possibly can be. But I think that especially when we're talking about a life source like water, we really have to be realistic. And I think it behooves us to truly educate our residents to understand what it is about water, where, where the costs are, you know, and that this is a very expensive process. And we are very fortunate here in this country to have these types of water systems where we can open up our tap and get clean water. There are very few places like that. So I think that, you know, it's nice to, to try to say, oh, yes, we're, you know, we, we can do it at a really low rate, but if it's going to hurt us in the long run, it, there's just, to me, there's no point in having that goal. We really have to get down to educating people so they can understand why these things cost. They're very costly expand, you know, to expand, and it's, these are huge costs. And I, I just don't think the average citizen really truly understands that.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes, just to balance on that, I agree with Ms. Ford. You know, one of our, our neighboring cities is having some significant political issues right now because of their water rates. And it's in large part due to the fact that they didn't make the investments over time, at least as I understand it, they didn't make the investments over time that they needed to make. And so now they're playing catch-up, and it's hurting the residents, it's causing actual pain. And that's the last thing we want to be faced with, is kicking the can down the road until the point where we can't kick it any further, and then the pain is magnified upon the people of our city. So I really appreciate that we're looking at these things now. They're not easy conversations to have. They're certainly not fun for any of us. We don't like it, but it's something that is a necessity. And I'm, I'm glad we have the courage and conviction to take a look at it now, as opposed to saying, we're going to wait, we're going to wait, and just making the problem worse. So, thank you.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I, you said something just a second ago that I didn't catch in the presentation, that only West Arvada would have the water fee increase?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay. I thought you said that some people would have it.
No, no, no. Some people are going to have the minimum service fee.
Oh, yeah. I was talking about water.
Which is going to be on their water bill, so they're not going to be able to...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that water was spread across the entire city and wasn't just on the west side. Okay, thank you.
This is everybody. Okay. Ms. Gillis, are you ready to go?
I certainly am. Not to, to drag this out any further, but I also want to state that the work that was presented tonight is a result of the master planning that was directed as part of City Council's strategic plan. So that is what we do. And we'll dive into the waste handling presentation, and I will, going to target 30 minutes, we'll go as quickly as possible. So it, as we dive in, we've provided these periodic updates, and the main thing is making sure that you have the information that you need as we go on into implementation. We want you to know where we're at and what you might be able to be hearing and expect over the next few weeks. Ahead of this presentation, the team got together and said, when we dive into the presentation, what do we want council to be aware of? And it's that we've used an exhaustive list of communications, both information and venues. We've been communicative and responsive to our residents and through customer service. We've been thoughtful, nimble, and nimble with the changes and unexpecteds. And you're going to hear about some of those changes and challenges and unexpecteds that we've encountered. We've been collaborative internally with our partners, and I believe with our residents as well. Next slide, please. You've seen this slide many times, and this is the why behind the council direction that we're working on. Next slide, please. Also another familiar slide, but wanted to show you where we're at. Carts will be arriving in June. It's going to look different around the city in June. There's going to be a lot of activity. We've had a lot of calls, we've had cart selections, and this is going to be literally more visible as we move into June, when the carts are brought to the city staged and deployed. Next slide, please. Another familiar graphic for you, which describes the service levels and the cost of each of the service levels. We just want, you know, want to keep this in front of folks, people are aware of this. As of late, even today, we continue to hear that many residents are receiving a reduced cost by converting to the city's program. Most we're paying, that we've heard from, that their rates are coming down, are paying more than $25. We've also seen other haulers reduce their fees, which have allowed residents to reduce their fees. We also see that as a win with other haulers, because rates have come down significantly. Next slide, please. These are more detailed milestones, want you to look back a little bit about what we've accomplished and then what's ahead. Right now, we are in the middle of a major data merge and cleaning. At the project team level, we've been meeting deadlines to hit that 7.5 service start date, and there's been a lot of activity in the backgrounds. Again, service delivery, service collection is going to begin in July. June's big with getting the carts rolled out. Going to say this a few times tonight, but when we roll out the carts, there's 180-day period in the contract where residents are able to change their cart size selection, move to minimum service, whatever they choose. Right now, we are in a frozen period related to that data, to get the data cleaned. I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in a minute. So cart selection and data changes. Currently, as I stated, I'm sorry, next slide, please. As I've stated, the data is frozen right now. We're not taking cart selections, we're not taking changes, we're getting the data cleaned up. Schaefer's aligning their addresses, cart selection and planning delivery routes. Republic's syncing resident addresses and customer information with the city utility billing system. We had more cleaning than anticipated due to multiple submissions by many residents. We had over 823 duplicate selections, not the same selections. We had residents that selected different sizes and even varied their addresses. So there has been a lot of cleaning, good stuff. Data will be cleaned, data governance is a good thing, but it's been a little bit more than we thought we would have, and we're working on that collaboratively with our partners. Some really masterful data governance folks internally that are working on that as well. Next slide, please. So we always go into some numbers, and we'll talk about that. Let's jump to the next slide. As a reminder, there's nine haulers in 2020, there's nine haulers in 2021. They'll be receiving a reminder letter in June about compliance with the changes to the ordinance, which will require additional reporting. We're providing a template for that reporting, so we'll be able to provide counsel with some consistency in reporting from the haulers and also measure that increase in recycling. Laura? Yes?
Lori?
Yes?
I want to make a comment on this, and it goes back to the very first slide that I was thinking about when I was looking at that slide for probably the 10th time. You know, what I did when I looked at that is I said to myself, "These are benefits, but there are also benefits that the city is not going to see immediately." And I think the reason why I want to say that is because of the fact that we haven't changed the number of haulers yet. We still have nine. It's a goal. And I think that's something that we would help to communicate that as well, because, you know, we get a lot of, well, I do anyway. I can't speak for anyone else. I'm getting emails where people are saying, you know, you know, "This is supposed to reduce the truck traffic. It's not reducing the truck traffic. It hasn't reduced the haulers." We know that this is, this does change, but it takes time. You know, a couple of years, years. This is not a, an immediate change, and I know you know that, but I'm, I'm talking about as far as communicating that to the public.
Thank you for that, and that is a very good point, Councilmember Ford. We have been looking at that, actually, our goals. We, we do believe the recycling rates will, will increase significantly just because not everybody was providing recycling. As for the truck traffic, that is all about efficiency and routes. So depending on these shifts and what happens with those routes, the likelihood of truck traffic going down is high, but you're right, over time. Also, just a quick side step on that one, we are looking at those calculations related to reduce truck traffic, and we're going to bring that back to you. It's not as easy as one would have thought. We've run through many scenarios, so how we're looking at that will be different than we had anticipated, but we will share that at a future presentation.
And, and I also wanted to ask you a question because, and make a comment. When you talk about the data merge and cleaning, first of all, I'm very excited about that as one who does a lot of databases. And, you know, later on in the slide, you know, you're going to get to it. But when we see that difference between the original calculation of approximately 32,000 households and 25,000 approximate, the number is here, but that's part of that data change, right? That we're becoming very, we're, we're really becoming very clear on what we have here in Arvada in terms of HOA, number of HOAs, number of households, all of that.
We are much more informed regarding HOAs. The implementation of the program resulting in changes in eligible residents has been learning as well, just about how we count addresses and those multifamily addresses, which decreased and then increased again. So we'll talk about that. But yes, it's, it's, we feel well positioned with the data that has come from this process, but it has not been easy. We didn't have this information.
I, I can imagine. And I'm very excited about that because we all know that data is good information.
When we clear milestones, we're excited. In the middle of the work, it's frustrating. So with that, I'm going to jump to customer service, and I'm going to hand off to Jason to talk about this.
Okay, so, quick, oh, there we go. Yeah, so emails and phone calls. Next slide, please. Yep, so we had about 9,000, 9,200 some phone calls there. Let's see, I can make the screen too small here, sorry. 9,445 phone calls that came into 7575 when we started that in January. And we also started up our wastehauling@arvada.org email, which we've had about 500 emails come into. We handed off the phone calls for a little bit to Republic and then took those back on March 11th. At that point in time, we kept them until April 25th, and we took like 6,673 phone calls and 318 emails. So we then handed it off to Republic, and we set it up a different way with a call tree this time. We have a number one press off to come to the city for billing and a number two press off to go to Republic. We've been pretty much in the middle there, so we've had 640 phone calls come in total since the 26th. 344 to the city, 296 to Republic, and just a few emails. Next slide. So what are we hearing with what people are saying is a lot, since the 25th, "I missed the initial cart selection period. What do I do now? I want to change the minimum service. I want to change my carts." A lot of people are also calling and emailing to confirm what their selection was, so. And then, of course, some opinions about the program. What we are doing and have been doing for this whole time is daily huddles in the morning. We have three meetings in the morning, one with Republic, one with the core team, and one with the customer service team. And we've been updating the FAQs as needed and just being aware of what's happening and what's going on. Next slide, please. So HOA updates, we had one in the January that kind of gave us our first numbers. Next slide. This is where we were at in January, when we first started thinking about, you know, how are we going to get all the rest of the information? We knew that when the cart selection cards went out, we would be able to gather up the rest of it at that time. So next slide. So we picked up 10 new HOAs that we didn't know about. We increased our percentage of HOAs with waste hauling contracts, decreased our HOAs that we didn't know or hadn't responded to us. We're down to seven now, and increased our total HOA number for the opt-out and minimum service. Next slide. So what, what did we get from this? Since we started working on this is we have a map now with current information that's up to date, and that will be kept in our CIS database as well as our ESRI database. To keep track of all new HOAs, we have identified 10 additional new ones, and then we have three HOAs joining the program in January, besides the two that we already have. Great, back to you.
Thanks. So, so on those HOAs, it depends on where they're at with their contracts. So there have been many a conversation with Jason as far as providing information and anticipating what, where we're going to land in January and then further into the future. So we're tracking all that information. They all had to provide a copy of the contracts so we can anticipate, excuse me, where they might be. Next slide, please. Any questions so far?
Nope, you're doing good.
Moving right along. Cart order strategy. So we are planning for-
I beat council into submission for not asking questions.
Here we go. We are planning for changes again. 180 days after July 5th, we have for those cart changes, whether it's the selection, whether it's to minimum service, there, there is a time period there in the contract that those are without, with no cost. We know that there will be those changes with this dark period that we're having right now to adjust the data. We're getting those calls, so we know that people will be calling in the future. We are going with that 95 defaults. That's going to show up in the numbers that we're going to talk about here. Next slide, please. This is the information that you've been seeing all along. Again, about 25,478 eligible addresses for this program. We did hear responses from about 67%, which is really fantastic. We're, it's a new program. We're reaching out to the community, and we feel really good about where we're at. The split of that 50, 67% is service levels 1, 2, 3, about 38% of it, and minimum service at about 29%. You can see the other percentages below. We're going to blow that information up on the next slide, please. And by blow up, I mean it's bigger. So, hello. So when we look at these, these numbers, again, 25,000 eligible addresses, you can see the cart selection counts for each service level. We have that non, that no response of about 8,516 residents and eligible residents, and then a minimum service received at about 7,300. These are the numbers that we're starting from. We had to use these numbers to consider what we're going to do for our cart ordering strategy and then our deployment strategy. We were very specific and consistent in our communications that if there was not a response, there would be a 95-gallon default. So that's a 95 waste and a 95 recycle cart.
Lori?
Yes?
Excuse me. Are we going to survey why, why we've not heard from this 40%? So we kind of know whether it's a communication issue? Is it just that I'm mad I don't want to sign up for it? Or, you know, is there, was there bad information or whatever? Because it's still a large percentage that hasn't responded.
Understand. It's about 30, 30% and we're going to, I'm sorry, it's 33%?
33, yeah, sorry.
33, yeah. No, no, it's, every percent matters at this point.
It does.
So we will hear about, hear why we didn't hear from folks as we continue through the process, because we will have a group of folks just didn't have any idea, didn't read the mailers, don't read the Arvada report, don't do social media. I did not know. They will know when carts are delivered to their house, and then we'll have the part of either picking them up or informing them of the program. We have a component of that 8,000 that are, let me use a very specific group, Republic Services customers. They received a mailing from Republic that said, "You don't have to respond. We're going to transition you over." So there's a chunk of those residents that are in that place as well. And then we have others that just plain didn't respond, and they will get the carts, and then we'll deal with that piece of it as far as we're going to do those carts. We have received calls, and you would think, I would, I anticipated more calls at this point in time of, "Oh, no, don't bring me the 95. I want minimum service," or, "Oh, no, I want a 35." And we haven't received as many calls as you would have anticipated. I think Jason would agree with that, that it's, it's been pretty slow. People are being pretty patient. What will trigger this, as I stated earlier, is that activity in the community when those carts are being delivered. We're preparing to take those calls and be responsive to those calls, as is Republic. So you have your cart manufacturer deliver, which is Schaefer. They have a subcontractor that, you know, rolls out with the trucks, and we'll talk about this in a minute. And then you have Republic, who will be doing the cart exchanges after July 5th and be doing cart pickups as soon as their system is live to hear, "I don't want those carts." The city is also partnering and collaborating, because there are some customers that are fine, "Okay, I'll call back in July." And there are other customers, much like when we started the program, that said, "I need to opt out right now." So we're anticipating that and planning, and it's going to be, it's going to, volume's going to go up, and we're going to take, take care of it.
Good. Mr. Jones?
Thank you.
Just a quick clarification or question on, on the opt-out or the minimum service fee? If my recollection is correct, there was, there was an anticipation of about 3% of the population was going to select out, and we're at 29%.
It was, it was actually 1% to 3%, and that was based on experience in other communities. That was not a projection that we had. That was a projection of the teams that we're working with went up to 7% to 8% and we're at 30%. The vendor, the provider, Republic is still with us. They understand this is a new program. They understand more about Arvada. They will be challenged because the whole proposal is based on delivery efficiency, but they're preparing their routes and planning with the numbers as they've been delivered. They've been at these meetings, we have at least one weekly, but specifically about cart selection. We've been meeting regularly on this.
Okay. So I guess you answered my question, which was, is Republic still, like, in the game?
They are-
Knowing that 29% or 30% of the population is saying, "We don't want your service."
They are in the game. As, as Schaefer as well, because when we talked to them about cart manufacturing, that, that number would have been higher as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Yeah, thank you. Lori, I think, I think what I get thrown is the math a little bit. So there's 25,478 addresses that are available. So if you go back to the previous screen-
Yep.
67% responded, which would be 17,070 folks of the 25,000 some change responded, right? But of that, it's not that 38% bought service. Of the 67%, it's actually 56.49% that actually got carts of those that responded. I think this, this slide throws me a little bit because it's, the percentages are not actual, because you still have about a third of people need to respond still.
Yes. And we have changed this slide based upon council feedback a couple of times.
Oh, sorry. Can we do it again?
Go back.
No, no. Can we, can we just keep changing it till we get confused?
It's super, it's super fun, but let me, let me help, because I understand exactly where you're coming from on the other side of that. We had the same, had different issues. But when you look at those numbers on that slide, we had 16,692 responses. So it's close to your 17,000 number you were saying. We had 9,600 pick 1, 2, or 3, and then we had 7,300 pick minimum service. So, so the math does work, because we've all checked it and we've changed it a few times, but that's, I understand what you're saying.
But you're doing the percentage based on the total potential addresses or qualified addresses-
Correct.
Versus those that have responded, 50, almost 57% have-
Selected.
Selected 1, 2, or 3 of the service.
We're at, we're at a 57-43 split between minimum service and 1, 2, or 3.
Of those that have responded.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good math, Bob.
No, thank you.
And I had a question. That 25,000 includes the HOAs or doesn't?
Does not.
Does not. That's, that's what I thought.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. I actually just wanted to follow up on Mr. Jones's point in regards to Republic's still being game and whatnot in the math of this. I wanted to just verify, it's not the city and the taxpayers that are paying the difference here. It is indeed Republic and the services of their business model, correct?
I'm, I'm going to go with yes and no, in that, in the contract, you remember, we negotiated $4.25 as part of the 5.13. $4.25 goes to Republic, and that was to cover the assumption of risk and the capital investment for the overall program that they came in with. Okay?
But in other words, like, the, the city team isn't losing money on the investment?
No, the contract was negotiated. We are not supplementing the program. It's an enterprise fund.
Thank you.
Good question. Anything else here? I'm going, I'm not going to hit my 30 minutes.
You're doing good.
Okay.
That's our fault, just as it was with the, with the water issue. It was council's questions, not the presentation, not the presenters. It was the presentees.
Love the questions. So if we go to the next slide, this is just a summary of what is related to the costs and the ordering. So I'm going to walk you through this at, at the highest level. You start at the, the left column with the level of carts. The second column from the left is the count of carts being ordered or the count of the selection. Moving to the third column, additional inventory, we did order additional 35 and 65 carts, because we know there will be people shifting around, and we can order more in the future and the price is set. This is just for this initial bulk order, and we know we're going to have some initial changes. Then we have the cart order in that third column from the right, price per cart, and then the cost. The main point on this slide is that of the 1.7 total cost for the carts and deployment, we are receiving about 44% in grant money, which is 778,000.
Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, just wanted to ask you a question here. So the, we're getting about 700,000 out of 1.7 million in grants, so there's about a million for the enterprise fund to pay. Is that better or worse than kind of our model or our pro forma was on the enterprise fund paying for carts?
We believe we can still make that five-year payoff, and that, so that means we're, we're running because there's, the cost is down because we're buying fewer carts, and the assumption for the payment of the cart is within the fee charged at the service level.
And, but is, is the grant money static, or was the grant money based on how many addresses ended up in the program?
The carts have to be delivered for the $15 per cart grant money, so that money's, will also be adjusted, but then we'll also, the cart, amount of carts purchased will also be.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Simpson, do you have another question or?
Yes, thank you. I was just actually following up on Mr. Marriott's point. So if I recall, we originally were thinking 5 million for carts, that it was 2.3 million. Now with grant funding, we're looking at about a million dollars. So it's come down significantly in terms of cart investment?
And, Ms. Simpson, I, I apologize. I cannot remember where that $5 million number came from. Do you, it's social media?
A lot of social media.
Social media. So the numbers have come down based upon the number of carts that we're ordering. We are in a better position, and we will bring the model based upon where we're at once we get the data cleaned. So your next, at the next presentation, we'll actually show you, here's what we had in the model, here's where we're at. We are managing the model. Brian Archer is watching us real closely.
Okay, perfect. And it, and we're expected to pay them off in five years. And what's the estimated lifespan on the carts?
I would say 10 to 15 years.
Perfect, thank you.
And we recognize there will be changes. We had a, a number factor in the model for broken, damaged carts as well. So that's in there. Okay? Good?
Good.
Next slide, please. So like I said, there's going to be a lot of energy in the community. We'll be, we'll be staging and deploying the carts. I use we loosely. That will be our manufacturer that will be doing that, and that will be out of Arvada High School. We were having meetings today, and Jason is coordinating all that. I have a big section on what this looks like, and let's just know there will be semis bringing them in, dropping them off, and then there will be 350 trucks pulling 20-foot-long trailers to deploy the carts. We are going to have ambassadors from the city that are available, because we know that it's going to be questions and people wondering. We're working with the cart manufacturer, manufacturer on how we can be responsive if we run into any challenges in the field, which we do anticipate.
Mr. Marriott?
Lori, sorry. I just have one other quick question while we're talking about carts. What's the policy going to be for either lost or stolen carts? And so let me just phrase that in, in both my neighborhood, my work neighborhood- And so let me just phrase that in both my neighborhood, my work neighborhood, and my home neighborhood. We see a number of individuals using Target shopping carts as personal transportation. And lately, I've seen some of them using waste management carts for personal transportation because they're waterproof and they have a lid and they can even put a lock on them. And so, and they're readily available one day a week at any address that you want, so they're easy to get. What happens to an individual, a homeowner, who puts their trash out on whatever day and comes home from work that day and their cart's gone?
They'll call Republic and it will be replaced. The challenge is, this is a city inventory of carts, so we'll want to manage that. There's an RFID code on the cart and there's a, it's not a bin number.
Serial.
Serial number.
Right.
On the cart as well, so we'll be able to track this.
The question is, are they free of charge to the residents?
Yes.
Who are participating in the program? So they're not, a resident whose cart disappears won't be charged for replacement, even if it happens several times?
Correct. And we will work with code enforcement if we see that happening repeatedly in a certain area, but we have the advantage of having those serial numbers and being able to ID those carts. They do have City of Arvada on them, so if they're running down the street, there's a problem. And that's all I have to say about that.
Well, if they leave them on the curb, they'll get picked up. Only thing I would say is that the Target carts say Target on them too, but nobody has much inclination to take them back. So anyway, thanks.
I think I covered that. Anything else?
Next.
Next slide, please. So we are making progress on our drop-off events. I had the cart deployment here as well, but let's go on to drop-off events. Next slide, please. We have, as we communicated early on in advance of the program, we'll have two drop-off events, East and West. And in addition to that, the program has the $15 bulky item pickup. We know that we've heard from a lot of folks, they're really excited about that. You can't take anything big anywhere for $15. So also an advantage is part of the contract. And then we have the yard debris drop-off events, which are planned for November, real similar. We have Sandra McDonald, who has run those events in the past, working with that on us. So we are very confident in those events and where we're headed. Next slide, please. On the bulky item drop-off, we're looking for another name, but this is what's included in the contract, so this is what we're using. We do have dates picked for July 24th and August 14th from 8:00 to 2:00. You can see the locations. More to come on that. We have a lot of work to do on that. As far as logistics, there's a lot of variables. There will be a lot of cars. When you think about the eligible addresses being not just the 25, but you need to put the HOAs in there, so you have 39,000 or plus that are eligible to participate in this, and that's a lot of cars. So we're working on planning some logistics, considering a scheduling system to run people through so we don't have too much of the backup, but there will be backup. Republic's been great. We do believe both these sites, Stinger and North Area Athletic Complex are ideal. John Fruzi has helped us map those out, but that's a lot of cars to plan for, so we're working on those logistics.
Lori, are we planning on only doing a single day for the large item drop-offs? Like, I don't understand how if, you know, at different times, our large item pickup plan was far bigger than we ever thought it would be. And if this becomes far bigger than we ever thought it would be, I don't understand how we're going to possibly be able to handle that in one day. And how are we also going to tell people who wait in line for hours and hours and hours and miss the cutoff and say, "Well, now you've got to wait till next year to do this," after they've loaded mattresses and carts and, you know, couches and things like that in their car to bring them? Do we, wouldn't it be better for us to start with ample or plenty or, you know, sufficient and make it three days worth or four days worth or something we know is at least enough and then trim it back based on what we actually see rather than putting ourselves in the position of undershooting and then having a whole bunch of people who said, "I dug all this stuff out of my basement and put it on the car and drove it down there and I had to hire high school kids to help and then I couldn't get in and the traffic was backed up all the way down Ralston Road and I couldn't get there."
You've just recited all of our nightmares.
Yeah, I know.
And so it is fair. And we're working, we're looking at other strategies as far as having a specific spot for mattress drop-off because those are things that can't go in the roll-off. We have, we will have 20 roll-offs at each of these sites. We'll have six drivers available to change out those roll-offs. Our calculations right now aren't nearly high enough to handle 25,000. That's why we're working on being able to set expectations and have some sort of sign-up so that we can staff this appropriately. Part of our challenge with doing a three-day event has to do with the availability of Republic and their drivers. They have CDLs. They can only work so many days, there's only so many available. So that's part of what we have to work around as well in staffing the events. We know that there's going to be challenges. We're working through using data to project what it's going to mean to get there. You know, Jason's been calculating how much fits in and average drop-off. We do have the limitation of the five items. We're defining those five items consistent with Republic's bulky item definitions to help us manage this. We are not in a position to have big trucks come up and just empty the back of their pickup of construction debris. That is not going to work. We wouldn't have the flow of traffic coming through. We're thinking through all that. We will have challenges. I hear you. We don't have the ability to do a three-day event because we don't have the ability to turn around the roll-offs.
Right.
We've also talked to Lakewood, Inglewood, oh, one other place, on what they've done, so we're gaining some strategies. It's all hands on deck, recognizing we have a lot of citizens that during a pandemic spent a lot of time streamlining their homes.
Yeah. Just to comment, and it's, you know, this program has obviously caused a lot of consternation within the community. There's a significant portion of our community, somewhere near 30% so far, who have, who feel like the fee that they're paying is unjust, at least the part of the fee that go into a company they've chosen to not do business with. But the one thing that they get, the only benefit they get out of this program is the large item drop-off and the yard waste thing. That's it. And if that's unreasonably difficult for them to participate in or logistically impossible or anything like that, I think it just creates more bad feelings. And I realize, this is totally uncharted territory. We have no idea what it's going to be like, how it's going to work. I would just encourage us to, let's err on the side of better service, not worse service. That the first time around, we need to be, have ample opportunity for people or ample time or, you know, whatever the measurement might be, but let's not do anything to make, you know, things any rawer on people that are already raw. And I know you're considering that. You've mentioned that before and that's your nightmare, but, you know, it just seems like that it's not a, in this particular case, with it being brand-new, you want to make a good first impression and try not to make a disastrous first impression. So we ought to try really hard to make that happen.
Absolutely agree with you, Councilmember Marriott. Now, what I want to say to you is when I describe the nightmare, this team sits down and works to address what we're going to run into related to those problems. The biggest unknown is the number of folks that will show up and we're going to do all that we can to cover those attendees and set expectations. We are looking at ways to expand it that we haven't been able to confirm with Republic yet, but we will be limited on what we'll be able to take regardless on that one-day event. And there's not a possibility to run it for the two days. So I couldn't agree with you more. We want this to run well and we want to provide that service. Now, I also want to add, and not in disagreement with you, but much like there's the 30% that are frustrated about the fee, there is another large percent that is so excited to join this program and reap the benefits. Balancing, we don't want to let anybody down. And that's the pressure we're going to put on the team and make sure that we're available.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. So, great job and thorough, thoughtful on all of this. It's hard, and I know. My thoughts are, along with Councilmember Marriott's suggestion, is twofold. One is, I know that we can't do the two-day event or three-day event and have Republic empty day after day, but could we receive for three days and have an incredible pile of couches and mattresses out at the NAC for a week until Republic can pick them up? Or can we do it more than once a year, quarterly?
So we have the two days planned. We have the July and the August, so we really have two days. What you're suggesting is exactly what we, that we're looking at as far as if the roll-offs are all full at the end of the day on Saturday, they can be picked up on Monday. So after Republic has to stop working, they can only work till 2:00 because of their CDL hours. If they leave with the roll-offs empty, we can be there longer and fill them up. And then they can turn them over again on Monday and take them and empty them. So there's strategies there. Republic is working with us. They are limited on their hours. By using some other resources related to picking up mattresses, get them out of the equation because we will receive a lot of that in the box. The springs and the mattresses don't work well, plus the handling of them. We don't handle them now, so we have to use our heavy equipment to move the mattresses and put them in the bins.
Mr. Pfeifer?
So, agree that we should do really well, like Mr. Marriott says, but I also want to remind folks that, you know, when we had the, we'll call it the Cadillac bulky item pickup, which when people would come around in each section or we would go around and pick up people from the curb, remember that program ended and that we're bringing it back? So we also have to be exciting that you're bringing back a program that was not sustainable in its original format and bringing it back. So I just, you know, want to celebrate the fact that it's, yes, we should do a great job and push that bar high, but we should also celebrate that you're bringing something back that we really treasured before and get excited about. So, you know, bringing that back is awesome.
Thanks. We agree. We want it to be great and we know it's going to be a challenge. Any more on that?
Keep going.
Next slide. We're still working on this as far as the resident-owned carts that are joining the program and dropping them off. We don't want them all to show up at the large item drop-off. We need another event for this. Next slide, please. I'm going to hand off to Rachel.
Thanks, Lori. I'm going to just go over a little bit of a recap of our service level selection, call to action, and then give you a look at where we're going next in our communication activities. Next slide. So I'm not going to read this too, but this is an overview of everything that we did to communicate the service level selection to our residents. Multiple posts on social media. We had three press releases that got picked up by various media outlets. And we utilized every other communication channel available to us to make sure that we reached the most residents with our message that it was time for a service level selection. Our communication strategy throughout has been multi-channel, repetitive, and responsive. So I believe we did that during service level selection and we'll carry that through to our next phase, which will be service level or service starting and education. Next slide, please. Our next communication will be with residents who have selected a cart or service level 1, 2, or 3, or who are defaulting into service level 3. They'll get this postcard that says carts are coming and gives them a little bit of a heads-up. So again, just multi-channel, repeated, and responsive. So they'll see this, they'll see this on social, but this will go to households that are going to get a cart. Next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. Oh, goodness, I'm sorry, the one image didn't show up, but I have it on other slides. So again, oh, can you go back, please? One slide. All right, well, I'll talk to you about what was on the slide before while we try to get that next, the previous slide up. Thank you. So I showed you the in-mold label. It's on the left before. That will be on the recycling cart lid. That information is going to be repeated multiple times. Can you go forward one slide?
If it helps, we can see the slide.
Okay. You can see the slide with the recycling things. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. So I'll just keep talking about the recycling education. So multi-channel, this is on arvada.org. It will be on the recycling cart. The cart packet, which is on the next slide that we'll look at, will also have the recycling information card. We have some, we'll have some printed that we can mail off to people if they say, "Oh, you know, hey, I need some extra help with my recycling." This is a really handy reference tool and it's also available in Spanish, Russian, and Korean online. So this will be what we'll be using to help educate residents on how to recycle in the city's service. Can you go to the next slide, please? On all of the recycling carts, there will be a cart packet. The cart packet is part of our grant from the recycling partnership. So we've developed materials together that will support residents in recycling. So we have, on the left, is an FAQ sheet that gives information, just helpful to the program. We have a welcome letter in the middle that's from the grant partner and also the city. And then again, the recycling info card. So all those things will be in a plastic bag attached to their cycling cart when it shows up at a resident's house. Next slide, please. We'll also be including a colorful pull-out insert in the June-July Arvada report that focuses on how to use the program. So what can go in your recycle cart? What goes into your trash cart? When to put the cart out? All those sorts of helpful details. But it also will have value for the whole community because we have the drop-off events listed. Next slide, please.
I have a question.
Yes?
Excuse me, my HOA, excuse me, here I go with the voice. My HOA has Republic. And I usually get phone calls, is that a service that Republic's going to do with their customers now? In other words, you get a phone call that says, you know, tomorrow is a holiday, there won't be any trash pickup. When we had a really bad snow day, I got a phone call from Republic that said, you know, because of the weather, we're not going to be picking up today. Your trash service is going to be the following week. Those kinds of messages. Are our residents going to have that opportunity? Because it's a great service. Republic does that. Do you know?
I do not know, but that is definitely something we can follow up on and find out what that level of service is for Arvada residents.
Okay, that'd be great.
So on this slide, you see again in the insert, we'll have that info card with the acceptable recyclables and then how to bag your garbage, what's garbage. We have some resources for hard-to-recycle and hazardous waste online that we refer residents to. And on the bottom right, you see the drop-off events. If we can go to the next slide, I've made it a little bit bigger, and I'm showing you that the back page of this insert lists the acceptable bulky items. So we talk about the curbside pickup for people participating at service levels 1, 2, or 3, and then also the drop-off events in the insert. So that will be in the June-July Arvada report, and it will have extras on hand at City Hall so we can also send to anybody who loses it or wants to see it again. So that is my communication update and I'll kick it back to Lori.
Okay. One more comment on that. You know, the Sustainability Committee also provides, you know, advice and consult on how we communicate. And one of their suggestions was, you know, make sure you have those at the Legion and at the, at some of our senior center service club areas. So we're doing that as well, just to get the word out because we have received questions, is that recyclable? Even Councilmember Ford had a discussion with me about what's in and what's out. And so I think we're all going to be learning along the way, so getting this information out there will be in a better position and meet the goals of the direction that you provided. So again, next steps, that assembly and delivery, if any of you want to take a look and see what's going on, we'll keep you posted. Part of our recycling grant requires video and pictures, and so we'll be sharing that with you as well. We're going to continue our customer support. It has been, I would say, more positive than it had been over the past several weeks. than it had been over the past several weeks. Today, we, you know, have gotten calls, my hauler just told me my rates are going up, my hauler this, I want to change that. So people are getting more engaged and active. And that July 5th date is a little frustrating, but we're glad to hear from folks, know that they're paying attention to these changes that are available. We're going to monitor and manage what's going on, keep you informed. We're going to jump to that education now, so we're going to have a lot of questions and growth in recycling, I believe, over time, as soon as people get engaged. We heard stories from the mayor and Councilmember Miller about how they've improved their recycling over time as well. So you'll be great ambassadors for the program as well. And with that, I will ask for questions.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. So we noted that the start date is the week of July 5th, and I know that your assigned day is already determined based on your address. I've actually been online. My day is Wednesday. However, I was wondering how we're going to be communicating that to residents, because I figure that'll be something that a lot of people will be like, what's my new day? And so they're going to be calling us. Are we going to put the note on top of the carts, or have a map included? How are we going to let people know what their new day is?
That will come on the calendar and be sent out to them by letters. The map that we have out already had proposed day, so they're reconfiguring the routes now, so it might be different.
Good to know. Even I will be looking then. Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Have we thought about getting the libraries involved possibly, and providing some information, and maybe even having some exhibit space on the program and recycling and the benefits, and, you know, why we do this and that kind of thing?
That's a great suggestion, and I'm sure Rachel K. has taken a note. We have not had that planned for working with the libraries for communications. That's a great resource for an outreach we can consider.
Maybe even the schools, you know, handouts for the kids. I'm sure they do that anyway.
I don't see any other questions. Ms. Gillis, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your team. I know it's been a tough road to hoe, but you're getting there, so...
We are getting there, and thanks to the team. They are actually really fun. So we've grown pretty close, and we're able to push through things together, so appreciate that.
Good. Mr. Devon, anything else you need from us tonight?
I believe we've spent quite enough time here tonight, but thank you, Council, for hanging there.
Thank you all. We're adjourned.